There are twelve members of this august body are present, your honor, including the Honorable Presiding Officer.
Having twelve members present, the Chair declares a forum. May I request Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the order of business?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Good afternoon, good afternoon everybody. There are no guests who will use our Honorable Chair. We proceed to item number five, approval of the agenda for today. There are no opposed sessions, Honorable Chair. So, I move approval of the agenda for today, which has been punished to each and every member of this august body on joint motion, Honorable Chair.
There is a motion from the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the approval of our agenda for today. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Everybody was punished copies of the minutes of their resolution on May thirty twenty twenty three and research session on May thirty one twenty twenty that I guess everybody was able to produce the contents, the law. Honorable Chair, accordingly, I move to the expense with the reading of the minutes, the previous sessions on May thirty twenty three and May thirty one twenty three and to approve the seven minutes in total, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. There is a motion to approve the minutes of the previous sessions dated May thirty twenty twenty three on regular session and on May thirty one twenty twenty three special session. More for each approval for the second and final reading, not unless there will be some remarks on our previous minutes. Hearing none, motion approved for each approval on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number seven, first reading of business of Italy opposed ordinances by the desk of Honorable Juanito Sakin Junior. Number one, an ordinance prescribing the development of livestock industry in Osami City, regulating the transport of animals, movement and storage of meat and meat products for public consumption and robust eradication imposing fees and charges and imposing penalties invasion of Honorable Chair here today. Wisdom of the sponsor of this ordinance, Honorable John Sakin, to introduce and recommend action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Juanito Sakin Junior is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I move to pass an ordinance prescribing the development of livestock industry in Osami City, regulating the transport of animals, movement of storage of meat and meat products for public consumption and rabies eradication and imposing for peace and charges and imposing penalties for violation thereof, Honorable Chair. On first reading, Honorable Chair, and be referred to the appropriate committee.
There is a motion from the author of this ordinance, Honorable John John Sakin, to pass this on the first reading. And be referred to the appropriate committee for proper action. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number two, an ordinance relating the sale of something into city liquor in City of Osami, Honorable Chair. I move only for the proceeding, approval of the proceeding, Honorable Chair. On joint motion?
On joint motion, passing this on the first reading, a proposed ordinance from the desk of the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Prasiantapayan. Motion approved on the first reading and be referred to the appropriate committee.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number three, dated June six twenty twenty three, Mayor Attorney Henry Henry Junior requesting for enactment of ordinance amending section three thirty five, three seventy nine and forty of ordinance number one zero zero one dash zero four, otherwise known as the ecological solid waste management ordinance of Osami City expanding the scope of provision on littering and increasing the penalties for violation. Again, I move approval, only motion on the first reading, Honorable Chair.
Pass on the first reading. This later dated June six twenty twenty three from the City Mayor, Attorney Henry E. Fominal Junior, requesting for the enactment of an ordinance amending section three thirty five, thirty seven, thirty nine and forty of ordinance numbers one zero zero one dash oh four, the otherwise known as the ecological solid waste management ordinance of Osami City and expanding the scope of the provision on littering and increasing the penalties for violation. From the desk of the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, I mean approve on the first reading and be referred to the appropriate committee.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I can report later June six twenty twenty three from City Mayor, Attorney Henry Henry Junior requesting for enactment of ordinance requiring for establishment within the territorial jurisdiction of Osami City to mandate that at least fifty percent of the employees obtain corporate incentive and or break a passive production incentive certificates from recognized training institutions or test accreditation centers. Again, I am just motion, I move approval only on the first reading, Honorable Chair. And be referred to the appropriate committees.
Move by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader on first reading and this be referred to the appropriate committee as being manifested earlier. Approve on the first reading and be referred to the appropriate committee.
Please present to literacy, these are requests for proceeding. One, two and three. One and two, Honorable Chair, annual budgets of Barangay Fifty Fifth District and Barangay Manikol during endorse by the activity budget officer for approval, Honorable Chair. I have to wisdom the chairman of the committee on barangay affairs, Honorable Jan Doktor to introduce and recommend action on items one and number two of literacy, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Jan Doktor, you are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion on items number one and two.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. With regards to the request of Marangay Fifty Fifth District and Barangay Manikol, Honorable Chair, for their annual budget twenty twenty three for Fifty Fifth District in the amount of four millions twenty seven thousand two hundred eighty and for Barangay Manikol in the amount of eight million seven hundred sixty five thousand. For this reason, Honorable Chair, I so move for a obdibus motion for first reading with reservations on this matter, Honorable Chair.
Items number one and two are the petitions request move with Honorable Jan Doktor to pass this on the first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Since this request is very urgent of the matter of their implementations of programs and projects, Honorable Chair, and of course, they complied all the necessary requirements and the Budget Office also endorsed for our approval, Honorable Chair. For second and final reading, an omnibus motion for this matter, Honorable Chair, Fifty Fifth District in the amount of per million twenty seven thousand two hundred eighty, Manikol in amount of eight million seven hundred sixty five thousand. Second and final reading, Honorable Chair, weaving the internal rules. On joint motion?
Due to the urgent request of these particular items on items number one and two as being manifested by the Honorable Jan Doktor, move for each approval on the first reading for the second and final reading. Is there any comment, remarks? Motion approved on the second and final reading for the twenty twenty three annual budget of the Fifty Fifth District in the amount of four million twenty seven thousand two hundred eighty and for Barangay Manikol approving the annual budget for the year twenty twenty three in the amount of eight million seven hundred sixty five thousand. Is there any comment, remarks? Hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number three, ordinance number two series of twenty twenty two Barangay Pataon realigning at the amount of hundred twenty thousand seventy two pesos from construction of water reservoir pro pipe to augment the amount of twenty thousand for construction of water reservoir pro one under the twenty twenty two twenty percent development fund. Or is this a proposal for approval? This is a transfer from the budget of the Barangay in the twenty percent development fund from pro pipe account construction of water reservoir to pro one under same account, construction of water reservoir making the total budget total amount of three hundred twenty thousand seven hundred seventy two, Honorable Chair. But I thereby urge to the chairman of Barangay Affairs, Honorable Jan Doktor, to recommend I introduce action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
Jan Doktor, you are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you again, Honorable Chair, Majority Floor Leader. An ordinance number two series of twenty twenty two Barangay Pataon realigning the amount of one hundred twenty eight thousand seven hundred seventy two from construction of water reservoir pro five to augment the amount of twenty thousand for construction of water reservoir pro one under the twenty twenty two twenty percent development fund. Honorable Chair, for first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
This request for the approval of ordinance number zero two series to twenty twenty two Barangay Pataon move with Honorable Jan Doktor to pass this on the first reading with reservation. Motion approved.
Considering its urgency, Honorable Chair, and with the strong endorsement by our Budget Office, Honorable Chair, I so move for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules on joint motion, Honorable Chair, the ordinance number zero two series twenty twenty two Barangay Pataon realigning the amount of one hundred twenty eight thousand seven hundred seventy two thousand seventy two pesos from construction of water reservoir to augment the amount of two hundred thousand for construction of water reservoir pro one under twenty twenty two twenty percent development fund.
Due to the urgent request of Barangay Pataon of the ordinance number zero two series of twenty twenty two realigning the amount of hundred twenty eight thousand seven hundred seventy two from construction of water reservoir pro five to augment the amount of two hundred thousand for the construction of water reservoir pro one under the twenty twenty two twenty percent development fund. Move with Honorable Doktor to pass this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks? Hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Message and communications, number one. D I L G memorandum dated May thirty twenty twenty three, we charge it Animal Welfare Related Policies pursuant to the Public Act number eight four eight five, the Animal Welfare Act amended by Public Act one zero sixty one. The available pages are available on the office directory, Honorable Chair. I recommend that this item be just duly noted in the Record City Council, Honorable Chair.
On messages and communications per the I E T memorandum, move with Honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number two, resolution number two eight five dash twenty three of the Sanggunian Legal and Services Occidental resolution recalling the resolution number two sixty three dash twenty three of the Sanggunian resolution lifting the declaration of the state of calamity in the province of Misamis Occidental which is embodied in resolution number seven nine six dash twenty two of the Sanggunian December twenty five twenty two due to the extensive flooding which caused lives, loss of lives and massive destruction of properties and agriculture. I again recommend, Honorable Chair, that this item be just duly noted in the Record City Council, Honorable Chair.
On item number two on messages and communications, move with Honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted. This resolution number two eight five dash twenty three of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan Misamis Occidental that is a resolution recalling the resolution number two sixty three dash twenty three of this Sanggunian, a resolution lifting the declaration of a state of calamity in the province of Misamis Occidental which is embodied in the resolution number seven nine six dash twenty two of this Sanggunian dated December twenty five twenty twenty two due to the extensive flooding which caused loss of lives and massive destruction of properties and agriculture. Move with Honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no committee reports under item number eight. Item number nine, we have none pending items, Honorable Chair. We have likewise no pending items. This is for the reading. At this juncture, Honorable Chair, we have the privilege and pleasure to hear on these matters from Honorable Linggis Wiso, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Linggis Wiso is now recognized by the Chair for P C L matters.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The P C L National Board discussed and approved the the two hundred twenty twenty three calendar of events with the intention that all the local chapters are aligned with the goals of the League at the same time and avoid conflicts in the schedules of provincial, regional and island events. Thus, they have an approved twenty twenty three P C L national activities which are the following. So, I'll be requesting our fellow councilors to vacant their travels abroad because the following are the schedules for the whole twenty twenty three. First is the upcoming June twenty one to twenty three Davau local legislative meeting, which is June twenty one to twenty three. Second is the international benchmarking for the on the third week of July at Bangkok Thailand. That's an approved activity. Also, we have our second continuing legal education and Asian Council's Forum last week of September in Sipu City. We also have our Year in Assembly, which will be on World Trade Center in Pasai City at December five to seven. And also, the annual President's Academy and International Benchmarking, which will be on December nine to twelve twenty twenty three in Hanoi, Vietnam. These are the approved calendar of activities for P C L for year twenty twenty three in order to avoid conflicts in the national and regional activities, Madam Chair. Thank you.
So you have at least five kinds of activities?
Yes, but until December.
As being enumerated, yes, until December. Thank you, Honorable Wiso, for your information. Noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. At this juncture, we also have the privilege and pleasure to hear on A B C matters from Honorable Edwin Ochavillo, Honorable Chair.
For A B C matters, may I recognize the Honorable Ochavillo?
Thank you, Mister Majority Floor Leader and Honorable Presiding Officer. This is just an information, Madam Chair, regarding letter or memorandum coming from the D I L G memorandum circular number twenty twenty three dash zero seven five dated May nineteen twenty twenty three. This is regarding the Sanggunian Kabataan Federation Summit on July twelve to fourteen twenty twenty three at the Paradise Garden Hotel and Convention Center, Mangaya at Borakai Island, Malay Aklan, Madam Chair. This coming May, July twelve to fourteen twenty twenty three, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Where is the venue?
At Borakai Island, Malay Aklan, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Ochavillo, for your information. Noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We also have the pleasure and privilege to hear on A B C matters from Honorable Jan Doktor, Honorable Chair.
For A B C matters, may we hear from Honorable Jan Doktor?
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Chair. For A B C matters, just to inform this august body, Honorable Chair, that on June twenty eighth, June twenty eighth will be the first judging of both contest per Barangay, Honorable Chair, to be installed around the the
Wellness Park.
Wellness Park, Honorable Chair. So, that will be the first judging day for the the both contest, Honorable Chair.
On June?
On June twenty eighth. Of course, the last judging will be on the maybe on July fifteen, a day before the Fiesta, Honorable Chair.
Okay, thank you for your information, Honorable Jan Doktor. And we really appreciate the strong participation of the fifty one barangays regarding this particular activity, both contests. Palumbay, Gimo Panindot, Hakey. And that would be done, and that would be held at the Wellness Park. Wellness Park. Was it clustered, clustered barangay?
Per barangay, Honorable Chair. Yeah, in addition, Honorable Chair, Per barangay has given thirty thousand to
So by barangay, by barangay, it's not clustered?
Per barangay, Honorable Chair, the fifty one barangays.
Okay, good. So palumbay, you know, huh? Panindotay, you know, okay.
Pagwapohay, Honorable Chair.
Our Wellness Park is the um, show window of our seventy fifth celebration.
So, I think, Honorable Chair, this august body and of course, if this will be aired in our TV stations, we will be inviting people to be around during that day, Honorable Chair, since it is expected for each barangay to display unusual, or no unusual. Mga mga, mga nindokod ng mga, huh? Mga unique, yeah. Mga nindokga madalagikan sa barangay, Honorable Chair. Pagkaon, pwede po tong mga
Pwede na po di pag-giveaways? Pwede na po di mabaligyang di mahalin? Pwede na po kang madola out?
Actually, Honorable Chair, the barangays will be selling since the beginning of June twenty eighth up to
July fifteen?
July fifteen?
Or sixteen?
Or sixteen, Honorable Chair. So, we are required to be always have a display. Muraing muna na, Honorable Chair. So, medyo bibo-bibo tadi to, ano nga time?
Okay. Thank you for your active participation. We really rely on the fifty one barangay to participate closely, no, in all of our lined up activities by July. Thank you for your information.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. At this moment, we would have the pleasure and privilege to hear on matters considering the interest level from Honorable Baey Renin Deputy, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Renin Deputy, our birthday girl for the month is now recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, this coming June fifteen, we have a tribal leaders meeting and the tribal leaders in three cities and fourteen municipalities at Oraketa City. Mini theater at Oraketa City. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. If I proceed to item fifteen, may we hear an invitation from our related veteran brand, Honorable Baey Renin Deputy? Do you have an invitation to this august body?
Yes, Honorable Renin Deputy, may we hear from you for some other announcement, if any?
Proceeds sa office, his ma councilor, sisilko. After decision.
Okay, noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I now yield to my colleagues for any announcement of any relevant and material information, Honorable Chair, if I proceed.
Is, I would like to hear from Honorable Ko, being the chairperson. Lapa, is there any developments of your chairmanship? Which is the search for
Outstanding individuals and institutions in the city. Citizen. Particularly business establishments that are already here since nineteen forty eight and prior. So up to now, as of today, we already have eight candidates or nominees for the old establishments that are still doing business up to now for more than seventy five years. And we already have three educational institutions for awarding and one, one, all the civic organization and two personalities in arts and sports.
Okay. So, that will be announced on July fifteen? But wait, is July seven?
It will be held on
July?
July fifteen, six o'clock in the evening at the city gym. In
July fifteen?
Fifteen, July fifteen, that would be on a Saturday. So, the government officials will be in Filipina attire while the guests are encouraged to be in their best attire.
Filipina?
Yes, our, the L G U, kita, post.
Filipina?
Yes.
Okay. I hope we can also submit our names, no? Katanangailhan ato, mga karaang tao who are really deserving for such award, no? We may submit that to Honorable Ko for some screening. Because I think, when is the deadline for the screening?
This June fifteen, nah?
June fifteen, happy?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
This coming Thursday?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This coming June fifteen would be the deadline to submit for screening the nominees for this first ever Asenso Diamond Awards.
Asenso Diamond Award is the first category is on business establishment?
For the main, the main award is would be the personalities who have who have demonstrated outstanding performances and contribution, who have made contributions to the community particularly, Osami City. And then, all the others would be the philanthropies of Osami City. And then, um, all the others would be, um, the, uh, philanthropies of Osami City who have made also big contribution in terms of properties, uh, in favor, uh, in favor of the government of the, of Osami City, including the, uh, city hall and, um, other structures such as hospitals like S M Lau and Mars M C. And, uh, yes, uh, the civic organization who have made, uh, great contribution to the city, particularly the Osamis Filipino Chinese Chamber of Commerce since nineteen twenty-eight,
The oldest.
Uh, donated our first fire truck, uh, making Osami City establish its own department of fire department and, um, three educational institutions that have made an impact since, uh, nineteen forty-eight or before in producing a lot of professionals, Osamisnon's and, uh, businesses that has been thriving ever since nineteen forty-eight.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Ko, for your information. Uh, anybody from the member of this August Day, should you have any information that you would like to share to Honorable Ko? Kuran mo ngailhan, please do. Okay. And may I hear also from Honorable Dinggis Wiso, being the chairperson of the this coming activity? Yes, Honorable, uh, you, any, any updates?
Uh, okay. Uh, we already submitted few of the proposals, Madam Chair, and those were revised proposals to really address the very needs of our upcoming activities. And so far, we already had the go signal for our upcoming opening of the sports activities.
And that would be on?
Uh, that would be on June thirty, that's Friday, prior to the opening of the Wellness Park, which is on June twenty-eight. During that June thirty, opening of the, uh, sports activities for the Fiesta Celebration, uh, we will be having players for the volleyballs, both three divisions, the men, the women's, and the L G B T. And also, we will be having our Enduro biking, which will be on Sunday, July two. The bus, the volleyball will be from July one, two, and three, three days for the men's division and one-day league for the women's and men, and L G B T, which is on Saturday, that's July one. And there will be three venues for that, uh, divisions. And our Enduro biking will be this coming Sunday, that's July two, at, uh, Stevenson Obordo. And there will be also an opening in the morning, and I think we will all be there uh, during the set activity. Uh, there will be invitations prior to that, and we will be coming up also for the program, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much, Honorable Wiso. Uh, we encourage everybody, all the members of this August Day to coordinate in all of the activities that has been lined up, no? And we will appreciate it very much, Honorable Wiso. If you could, please provide us the schedules of activities and that, uh, for, for wider dissemination. So I think we can also distribute that to the different media outlets, no? Para may bawal, ponila, for our public, for them, for their information to our, uh, listening public. Ok sa mga bisita na'to, no?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
I think, uh, I think Mr. Dumanho can also coordinate with you uh, for our, um, some information to be, uh, disseminated through the media. And I hope that, uh, we can, you can also conduct kumahimo as much as possible for all the, uh, Fiesta activities, lined-up activities, that you can have, um, interview, no? Uh, with, uh, with our media people para ma-widan gudangatong, uh, dissemination. Thank you, Honorable Wiso.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other matters before we adjourn? Um, we are now very busy after the Independence Day that we just have celebrated yesterday. Uh, before I forget, allow me to appreciate everybody who have participated on that, um, day, that, uh, Independence Day that we have yesterday. Salamat kaayo for your gentle presence, uh, being there. And, uh, and now, uh, we are very busy for the Fiesta preparation being, um, that would be on July, uh, fifteen and sixteen. Vor denisya of video, this will be a very big celebration because we will be celebrating the seventy-fifth Diamond, Diamond Celebration of Osami City. So something that we have to, you know, cherish, no, that particular celebration. Seventy-fifth, yo, daw pa'ta matawan na, no? Natawal mo, lepa. Niya papa. Seventy-fifth. So something that we have to cooperate, we have to coordinate, kung dosa ato ma-contribute towards, uh, a very colorful celebration, then we have to do it. Any other concern? From now on, let us get ourselves busy in the preparation. I think every now and then the mayor is calling us now for some meetings or any updates for the, uh, upcoming celebration. Any comment, remarks? Yes, Majority Floor Leader?
Honorable Chair, realizing that there are no more Osamisnon's, pa my colleagues, I now move to adjourn the regression.
Regression is now adjourned.